Called the April 2020 St. John Hudson USD 350 Board of Education meeting in order. First up, any additions or changes?
Aye, done.
Motion approved.
Mr. President, I move the board approved agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approved consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. We have no patron comments submitted, so the academic calendar.
You have that calendar on page 27. Structure is very similar. We, there were some suggestions from the teachers that maybe we ought to take off Monday after Easter. Maybe we ought to just do away with those. We have three days and we do a late start this year. Used to be early dismissal. Maybe we ought to do away with those and just go to one full day. The reason we have those few days is because we try to get some professional development in every month, but taking a whole day off doesn't really do us a whole lot of good. We're better off spreading that out to get our committee meetings in throughout the year. So, the consensus, or the majority opinion was that they thought that the early dismissals was better than the late start. Having starting school at 10:00, ending school at 1:00 and having our meetings in the afternoon was better. And I tend to agree. We did an experiment this year and had our late starts and it didn't work as well. I didn't get any feedback from parents on that. I had no complaints about either way, but. And then the two nights for parent-teacher conferences, March 8th and 9th. Rather than going till 9:00 and dismissing school a little early, we're just going to go the full day of school and go 4:00 to 7:30 for two nights. That makes it a little more flexible for parents too. If they can't make one night, maybe they could make it another night. So, scheduling the parents, I think is better for. Teachers were split 50/50 on that. Some wanted one night, some wanted two nights, but, so we erred on the side of being more flexible for families. Our spring break matches up with Barton. That's been our practice in the past. We have a lot of kids doing dual credit through them, so we match up our spring break with Assuming things are back to normal in August, that's what we'll do. I'd recommend approving this calendar if you didn't have any other questions.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the 2021 calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the 2020 through 21 calendar as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Handbooks.
We have our student handbook. That's on pages 28 and on the ways down. We don't really have any major changes to that. Mr. Y, did you have anything you wanted to throw out there?
Not at this time.
Okay. It's just important that the board understand what's in there because it's, it's, it's our policy, so we approve that. It has the force and effect of, of any other board policy. So, we'll bring that, any edits we have to that, to you next month, but if you had any questions on that, we'd be glad to answer them. So, between now and then, if there's something to think of, needs revised, or something that's not clear for you, let us know.
I still sign. I don't think there'll be any major edits, just some tweaks.
KASD dues and legal assistance.
This is a procedural matter. The board, I would recommend continuing our membership in the Kansas Association for School Boards. We get a lot of good out of that organization. I think you all get updates from them, probably more than you ever have time to read. So, we have yearly dues to be part of that association and we also have the option to be a part of the Legal Assistance Fund. On page 43, you'll see the adoption agreement. It's a pretty standard thing. So, we reach out to them. You all also have the opportunity to reach out to them and speak with an attorney. They have attorneys on call. You know, if we would have a legal matter, we could call them on the phone right now during our meeting and be advised of legal matters. So, there's limits to what they, what they can do for us, but, so we stopped to have another board attorney, but.
How does that work with attending KASD functions? Like, does this cover the cost? One person per school district?
It does for the, the annual conference.
Okay.
We get one conference free. Which part of that?
I noticed that there's, uh, weekly virtual forums starting this Wednesday.
Yep.
Do we just, do we have to go through you to sign up for that?
No, no. They have your contact and your email.
Okay.
So, this is, um, so if you, anybody not getting their emails? Have you seen them? Okay. Yeah, the last, I mean, I think today's email was talking about that weekly meeting, but if you need help getting set up, just call the office, call me or Lisa and we'll help you get signed up.
You were recommending the option one and not two, but why are we getting?
The, yes, the option two is a season pass, so that, that includes fees for workshops. Like, Blaine and I would go to a lot, or we would go to a lot as board members. That might be a better option than paying for each workshop we would go to, but we don't have enough attendance to warrant that. That season pass, but at some point we might. So, really, I'm just asking the board to approve the dues for, for the year and then the Legal Assistance Fund was the other, was the other option there.
Do you know off the top of your head how that, has that changed from last year's fee?
It's $60 more.
Okay.
And the legal assistance fee is the same. Dues have been pretty steady. They didn't go up a whole lot each year.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the dues for $5,396.96 for membership in the KASB and a fee of $2,100 for the Legal Assistance Fund for the 2021 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the dues of $5,396.86 for membership in KASB and the fee of $2,100 for the Legal Assistance Fund for the 2020 through 21 school year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Food service pay.
I would recommend with this unique time, our food service staff has put in a lot of time and they probably work more than, in a, in a tough situation, cooking the food and serving it to the families that drive up. I've heard of a lot of other districts doing special things for their food service. It's an important service for our community. We've had, I don't know, 150 to 170. I didn't see today.
175 today.
175 today. So, we're sitting at 175 meals a day. So, I would recommend that we give those ladies a nod. They're short-staffed as well. That we increase their pay by $2 an hour for this time period, just to give them a nod. We, it's not money we budgeted, but again, we're shorthanded in there, so we also get some federal funds that could help out with that additional cost. It's not going to be a, it's going to be a matter of less than a couple thousand dollars anyway, but that would be my, my recommendation to increase their pay for $2 an hour, by $2 an hour through that time period.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve a pay increase of $2 per hour for food service staff from March 23rd to May 15th, 2020.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve a pay increase of $2 per hour for food service staff from March 23rd through May 15th, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Board member activities.
It's kind of quiet.
Yeah.
I think that I have driven by and seen them hanging out too, and you know, there's always two or three out there it seems like. I, I've tried to go around and I see anybody and thank them for what they're doing, even as teachers and whatever, I think that's important to do these times.
Your office.
We've had a couple special ed, you know, those, the SEC meetings, and at the last one here, I talked about how we were looking at, at either renovating or building for the Haskins, the students who go to Haskins. At the last regular meeting, we got a breakdown of how much it would be per, per district if we went to a 15-year loan. And at this point, I'm still not completely comfortable with presenting it as ready to vote. There's just too many questions. And I think with what's going on now with our inability to really meet some place and discuss it as a group, at the next meeting, I, the meeting next week, I intend to ask them to table at least until we're back to having the schools open again and, and being able to have a meeting where we can all be there, because I don't see us having productive discussions while we're trying to do that over Zoom. So, I don't have anything additional to, to add to that. Did you have anything?
No, I, the last superintendent's meeting we had, that was brought up about, you know, financing it for three years and borrowing the money from one of the school districts and I had some serious concerns about that. I don't even know that that's legal and maybe they've determined that. And, you know, a 15-year loan, you know, school districts don't have legal authority to borrow money. We've got our lease purchase agreements for our buses and the facility upgrades we had, so that's technically not loaning money. It's a, it's a lease with an option to purchase at the end of it. So, I don't know that the special ed co-op is any different that, I don't think they can, I don't think they have the legal authority to borrow money and it would probably be the same as the school district. The lease purchase can only go out to 10 years. So, I'm not, they've got some work to do and determine what's legal. I have a superintendent's meeting tomorrow. I may get more information then.
I don't have any. Sheldon?
Nope.
Okay. The administrative reports.
Well, I guess, I'm always the guy that likes to find good stuff out of, out of sometimes negative, but tomorrow wouldn't really be a good day to host golf or track. The first thing, typically this time of year, we have a CPL honors bank where we honor the top 10% of our juniors and seniors. That's obviously canceled. It was supposed to be March 31st. However, I will find a way. We'll get, we'll get some kudos out there to those kids publicly through social media. Same thing with athletic honors and things like that. We can't have our sports bank for sport. I haven't figured out for sure how we're going to handle that, but my intention is to, is to still recognize those students in some way, get the, get the attention that they deserve. I don't know, Mr. Meyer and I have talked a lot about what to do with some of our stuff like prom and the banquets and things, and some of those things we just have to put off. We haven't figured out for sure where we're at on prom yet. Just trying to figure out logistics if we do have it at a different time, so we'll let you know later on that. Junior, senior play did have to be canceled. We had to make a decision because of getting our, some of our money back for the rights that we paid for that play. We didn't, they would have allowed us to extend it and put it on until June, but we didn't know if in the middle of June if we were going to have our staff, our cast here. So, we decided to just go ahead and cancel the junior senior play for, for spring. Our continuous learning plans, every teacher, I know the last time we met, we talked about this, but every one of our, our teachers submitted a plan that they have, that they've gotten out to students and parents about how their classes will be conducted and what the expectations are. I have copies of all those plans in my office. I've referred to them a few times when people have contacted me, but there is a, a plan on file for each one of those teachers. I'm going to be honest, we've had, I went, we went into this not knowing what we were going to give, but the majority of our students have done outstanding and staff as well. I'm really proud of both the students and staff for what they've done, how they've responded to this. I've got a handful of students who aren't, aren't doing the work that they need to do and I've got to start making some phone calls and probably making some torch visits to families to see if they're having difficulties in some way, shape, or form that we can help with, or if it's just a decision not to, not to perform. And I'm, we kind of knew which ones probably wouldn't do anything from the start because they're the ones we really had to prod while they were in class anyway. So, anyway, I would say that overall, given circumstances, we've been pretty successful with this. Teachers have, have adapted well. They've taken on technologies that they weren't necessarily familiar with. Students, the same thing, and even some parents. We've, we've conducted some IEP meetings and things like that with Zoom meetings and the parents have been able to get on. So, I really think that it's going as good as what we could have, could have guessed. Along with that, our grading procedures that we've come to establish for the high school, in case anybody asks you about it, a student's grade probably isn't going to drop a tremendous amount unless they just make that choice and it's their choice to not do anything, but that holds accountability piece. Again, Mr. Meyer, I've talked about this over and over. We've heard about some schools that aren't allowing any grades to drop no matter what, whether a student does anything or not, but student A does all of their work and student B doesn't do any of it. I don't know that it's equitable that we give them the same credit for that. So, I don't, we're going to do everything we can to keep that from causing anybody to lose credits, you know, through this process, the accountability. In fact, I did talk to one school today that said that they're going to revisit their policy because of that and everything. Some of the students who are just deciding that we're not going to do anything. But overall, we don't have a major, major problem with that. We do have a few students that we need to get involved with.
Are there any seniors who are at risk of not graduating?
Yeah, we have, we have two right now that, I, we're going to make it. I'm pretty sure, I'm confident we're going to make it. We may have to have some real downward conversations with them between now and then, just to let them know the severity of making that choice. The seniors, everybody else is okay, but those two, we'll, we'll keep hanging on and we'll follow them along. Graduation, I had a senior meeting via Zoom about a week and a half ago and I asked all the seniors for ideas for what they wanted to do for graduation. We discussed about five or six different things. I put out a Google form and let them vote on it and overwhelmingly, their decision was that they would rather put the graduation ceremony off until summer and try to have some type of a normal ceremony. Understanding that summer probably meant July, because I doubt if we're going to be able to have a varying harvest season. Okay? So, I'm going to suggest probably that we do that and we come up with two dates. If we can't do it on the first date, then we push it to the second date and, and we go ahead and start making alternate plans for that second date in case the first date falls through. And they all understood that too, that there's still a chance we may have to do, have an alternate plan where there's no social interaction. Okay? So, I'm, just looking at the calendar, the dates that I kind of thought made sense were maybe July 11th and August 1st. That's three weeks apart. I don't know that July 4th is a good weekend, good Saturday to have it on, but we don't have to do it on Saturday necessarily either, except for, you know, people in the workforce may not be able to come. And this is also if we can't have it on May 16th. This is assuming we can't have it on May 16th. Haven't heard anything. I don't know if the governor made any announcements today or not. My understanding, she was going to have another, she was going to address the state home again, but I, my feeling is we're not going to be there. Mr. Meyer and I talked and we'll, we'll make a decision on that within the next week.
Yeah.
For sure, what we're going to have, we're going to go. But the alternate option would be right now to go in July. Any thoughts on the dates from you guys?
Were they scared of just feel being sick even in June? Is that why they shut it back another little month?
Well, June, I just, yeah, but we don't want to put it off till June and then have to put it off till later in June than July. And if you have the battle of harvest season going on during June.
Yeah, we thought it'd be better just go ahead and get a date on it, even though it's later, at least then we'll, hopefully we can be pretty assured that if we put that date on, we'll get there. We won't have to pick a date and move back two weeks.
There's no getting leave early like servers or anything like that, are there?
What are, have you had any ideas of what some of the schools are doing or have you?
Most of the ones I've talked to are delaying until late June or early July. Some of the options that I gave the students was, and actually, I just had ideas and I was more than welcome to hear theirs, that you see the parade of graduates where they drive through town and they're escorted and then we issue the diploma. As they drive by a certain point, we hand it to them. Ad Astra Radio, we do something like that. Ad Astra Radio said that they would broadcast it over one of their FM stations, you know, the graduate speeches and all of the names as they're announced and stuff, and they would have done that for, for nothing for us and they still will if that's a route we have to go. Doing something virtually where everybody is dressed up in their own place in their cabin gown and we do just a total virtual meeting of some kind is another option. Bringing them in, just a few kids at a time and walking them across the stage and compiling a video is another, one of those options. So, we talked about several things. And having it at the football field and having a limited ceremony where each graduate could, would have basically a ticket for two people or four people, depending on how many people we have seats for to keep them six feet apart would be another option. So, as we push forward, this is, there's, there's just not a graceful way to have a graduation, I don't think, but I want, I want to give the senior something. They deserve to have that recognized. As I'll say in my graduation speech, they may graduate from three different colleges, but they'll only graduate from one high school. And that's it. Any other questions on that or anything? Just offices, office hours, we're open 8:00 to 3:30. In the office there right now, we have our secretaries in my office down there trading days. One of them works Monday, Wednesday, the other one works Tuesday, Thursday, and they're switching Fridays. So, we're trying to limit the number of people in the office at any one time. We do have the front doors locked now, so if anybody needs anything with a phone number posted, they can call us. We're not allowing anybody to come in if we can keep from them. If they need something, we're taking it out to them, just to try to keep that under control. Myself, as far as communication, I think this is a very difficult time to keep connections with people. I had a parent meeting last Tuesday that I just invited. I sent an email to, to all the parents, hopefully all the parents. And so, we had about a 30 to 40 minute meeting then, allowed them to answer questions. I may do that again. I feel like we're getting to a point where parents have more questions. Doing a weekly faculty meeting just to try to stay connected. I don't really have an agenda for tomorrow. It'll be every Tuesday. I don't have an agenda, but I just think it's important that we all get together, even if it's virtually, and meet, discuss some things. And then, my favorite part of the week right now, every Thursday morning, I'm just inviting every student to come on and, and get on Zoom. I do a faculty trivia, a couple corny dead jokes and try not to make it anything about academics, just relationships and connections. So, that's, to me, that's one of the challenges is, is keeping those connections alive while we're not having the physical face-to-face interaction with this. Any questions? Any suggestions? Because I'm open. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
Kind of along those same lines with our continuous learning plans, our remote learning, things have been going well, I think. I, I've had no calls. You know, I fully expected some complaints and there's, the feedback that we've heard from districts across the state, you know, I connect with a lot of, a lot of superintendents, but there's complaints that my kid's getting too much, too much work. It's, it's, they're on the computer seven hours a mid, a day and, and it's just too much work and we can't keep up with it. And then there's the other side of that. My kid's only getting 15 minutes of calculus homework every day and, and my kid wants to go to college and it's not enough work. So, and both people are right. You know, it's, it's just not a, it's a tough situation because everybody's situation at home is different and trying to, we can't have the same expectations for everybody. But I haven't, I've had no calls. Hasn't been without challenges, but we're in week three now, so things have seemed to go okay. I did want to point out, I did move our picture, our photos in here. This is a, this was a determination, the ability to see past challenge rather than stare at it. I think that exemplifies what our staff has done over the past several weeks. We didn't know what to do. We didn't know how to handle all this and everybody just got to work and they've gotten down to business. We're still tweaking it. It's still, it's not going to be perfect, but, but that determination that everybody's had to work through this. And I did bring our little chair in to remind us of what we do is still about those, those So, it's, it's gone well. I got in on a kindergarten Zoom meeting today and that was kind of fun to see them. Our food service program again is going very well. Our bus drivers are running routes, so they're doing the delivery of those meals. It doesn't take them long. There's only a handful of, of meals going out, different directions there. Our Kansas Education Systems accreditation visit, that's been postponed. We could do it via Zoom, but I'd just prefer to postpone it till fall and get it done then. So, that's something we've been planning for, but, but we'll have to do next fall. These next two items are rec building and then the house remodel project waiting on the legal. We need a purchase contract for the rec building and then attorney needs to review the lease purchase and then get a lease together. All of, and, and with the house remodel, getting ownership of that house, working through the deed. That, I started working on that on Tuesday of spring break, which was the same day the governor shut down schools, so it really got postponed a couple of weeks. So, we've been working on that. We obviously don't have any action on that, but hopefully by the May meeting, we'll be able to have something for you, ready to move on those, those items. So, they're still out there, still working on them. Increasingly concerned about our school district budget because of, you can imagine the state of our economy. the state of our economy, what that's going to do to state revenues with income taxes and, and sales tax. I think we're going to be okay through the end of the year. The other thing that complicates that is the oil valuation, I think I sent a note about that, but got notification that the oil valuation has been cut in half, so that, for two things for us really just means to maintain the same budget, we'll need a higher mill levy for our local option budget, and it'll mean about thirty thousand dollars less, give or take, you know, capital outlay than we planned on. Other property values may go up, but that oil valuation is, is pretty volatile anyway when we see those changes. But those two things, just our general state economy and that oil valuation is causing some concern moving forward. Every time the state budget, general fund budget is in trouble, school funding suffers. History has played that out. We do have some new federal funds coming in with that CARES Act, the federal act, it'd be about forty thousand dollars is my estimate. That's intended to be emergency funds to help out with anything to do with this, this pandemic, whether we hire new people, whether we're delivering meals, we're buying some Chromebooks, paying people more, some of those things, meeting the needs of those kids at home that we might have to help, help get them connected or something like that. So we will have some new federal dollars which should help, help with that moving forward, but hopefully things will bounce back pretty quick with our economy and we won't have those concerns for too long. Our cash balance audit, the legislative post-audit group is doing an audit at the direction of the legislature for ending cash balances. There's concerns from some legislators that school districts have too much money. This is easy for us, because we don't have too much money, we need, we need more. So I've been providing some information over the last several days to the person that's been assigned, so providing info to that person, some lessons about school funding and how the laws actually work. It's kind of frustrating they don't understand some of those things, but we'll help them through it. But I hope I'm done with that, getting them that information. Capital outlay budget, we were working on that with our rooftop units, should have more information for you next month, so hopefully we can get vendors in, get bids, get those things rolling, maybe pick up a few more projects, things like flooring, maybe try to get those done even before the end of the school year, we've got some room, people not in the building, so. But I think that's all I had for my report. Thank you.
I do have one more question, that's, how are things going with scholarship applications?
It's just a little bit more complicated now, because Wendy doesn't see those kids physically every day, but she's still making contact with us.
Okay.
My understanding is it's, we're, most of those kids are on track.
Are they due this week? Okay.
I do have one recommendation for resignation. Alexis Miller submitted her resignation last week via email. She worked in our food service department, and I'd recommend that the board accept her resignation.
So moved.
There it is. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the resignation of Alexis Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion carried. Okay, future agenda items.
We've got quite a few things to, to clean up. Negotiations, we haven't even started on that process. Again, the state budget makes me very nervous about that. Hopefully we'll have a graduation plan, so if you have input on that, those dates for graduation, please let us know. We'd like to get that sealed up probably a week from today and get information out as we get it on the calendar. Handbooks and fee schedules, a lot of the end-of-year stuff we have to do, so.
Okay, thank you. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourned. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion carried. All right, thank you.